It's 7 o'clock. You ready, Pat? Okay, it's now 7 o'clock. I'll call the meeting of the Huntington Township Board of Supervisors to order. Thank you. Any public comment for the agenda items? Okay. Secretary of Treasuries report. The first item is approve the June 13th Board of Supervisor minutes. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes?
I have none.
I have none as well.
I'm making motion that we adopt the minutes as written.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the bill list, approve the bill list. Any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the bill list as submitted. For a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the hour. Don't we usually have the bill list on the...
Gus, you want to show it? You have the bill list?
I don't have it.
Okay.
They didn't just get there? Sorry about that.
I didn't get an email.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
The expenditures were $31,000, $31,557 for the month. And the fuel, out of liquid fuels, were $141.73. Total expenditures were $31,699.54.
And that liquid fuel was used on what?
Stone from New Enterprise, stone and lime.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Financial report. We have that to show. You want to go through it, Pat?
Yep. Financial report for July 11, 2024. And the general fund total receipts was $42,052.28. Expenditures were $31,557.81. That lets a balance in a general fund of $902,479.73. In the ARP, interest received was $17.75. The, there were no expenditures. The balance is $216,543.39. In the state fund, interest received was $12.48. The expenditures were $141.73. And that lets a balance in a state fund of $137,833.95. So total of all the accounts as of June 11th, or June 13th, was $1246,474.10. Today's balance is $1256,857.7.
Okay. Any questions about that? Thank you. Any miscellaneous items?
No.
Okay.
Well, there was one.
Okay.
July 8th, the emergency management people were spraying. So we were supposed to put the word out, but, you know, they, it's over now. They're spraying for the black flies.
Okay. Chuck, roadmaster's report?
We're doing some side gutter cleaning, got some culvert replacements we're doing. Also, we got the tractor back with the new berm installed and the order for the new truck has been placed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the roadmaster?
No.
Okay. Okay, supervisor report, anything?
Yes, I have a, I had a conversation with a former York Springs fire company chief this week and he said that he was glad to see us instigate the ordinance on burning, that when he was chief, it was all done at the county and local municipalities didn't have any say in. All weather is not the same in Adams County, so.
Thank you. I received a call from the Pennsylvania State Police regarding the intersection of York Springs, Idenville, and Route 34. Apparently trucks are making that turn and hitting, hitting the guys' berm. It's, it's happening frequently. So I advised him that was not a township road, that's a state road. And he contacted, he wanted to know the contact I talked to, Chuck, and he got in with the right person, so. I was taken care of. Anything else? Okay. Gus, zoning officers' report?
Yeah. I issued a waiver to Dave Boyer and Crowley Road for the Shingles zoning permit to Jacob's Telecommunications. They have the cell tower on White Church Road. They're replacing antennas. Because our inspector isn't going to climb up there to check their work, I issue a zoning permit, so I have a record of them doing it. Also had a complaint about the fact that it's sometimes if they work there for a couple days, that they should have a portability. Occupancy permit to Richardson over at 270 Peachland Iowa Road for 37 rooftop solar We had a zoning hearing board hearing scheduled, was canceled at the last minute when the deal fell through. That was the one with LCDM for the agricultural manufacturing. We scheduled a conditional use hearing on the 8th Monday, this past Monday. We had a conditional use hearing for Steinauer for using the sports complex building for a warehouse distribution. And we found out now that I think that deal fell through.
That's the last thing that the seller's attorney told me, that the buyer had terminated. They were trying to make it work, but I hadn't heard.
Okay, well, that's the latest.
Is it mostly because of the permit being able to deal with the...
I think it's related to stormwater permit and the NPD.
NPDs permit, because they won't finish doing what they needed to do and, okay. That's what I had heard. I didn't know if that was true or not.
I don't know specifics, but I know that's been something that Scott's been discussing with them, I've been discussing with them, so.
Okay.
All right, and the last thing I have on here is the zoning hearing board hearing, I'm sorry, the rezoning hearing, that is a conditional use that's going to happen on August the 1st on the property of 180 South Ridge Road. The planning commission's still working on revising the Seldo. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the Lobos subdivision. It's been recommended to you gentlemen, we have to approve the subdivision and sign it, and also a non-building waiver for that property. The plan is signed and notarized, and that's before you. So even if they don't show up, we can go ahead and do that. That's basically it. If these, I'm having fun setting up these hearings and posting properties, but we only had one and that one went awry. Then fell out.
All right.
Every time we approve something, it falls through.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Any questions for Gus? Thank you.
I just have a question. You said the hearings on August 1st? I thought it was July 25th. Did that get changed?
It got moved on the 1st.
Okay.
Todd, do you have any solicitors' report?
I do not.
Scott, engineer?
We received our permit for the Greenberry Road Culvert project. Per DAB at the Conservation District, I need to finish the final updates to the spec package, give that to her for her final approval, and then we can advertise for bid for construction.
Okay.
Nothing new on the Myers Town Road project.
Could you please speak up? I can't hear you. I'm a little...
Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just...
You're just reading it?
I'm just reading off the screen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The planning commission's still working on the update to the Seldo. And there's one active plan under review, the Lobos subdivision, and board action is required by the end of the month.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, thank you. Fire company report, anybody from the fire company here? Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question about the fire company reports. Couple months ago, in watching various township meetings, there was quite a brouhaha about the volunteer fire companies audit. And I was surprised that I learned about this through that. So I have a question. The Relief Fund Association of York Springs Fire Company number one is actually the governing board of the fire company and is responsible for audits and the correction of any deficiencies. The reports are distributed to Huntington, Latimore, and York Springs Borough since they're the main, and I guess, I know we have a contract with them. So I was a little perplexed to find out that the last one was filed December of 2021. Apparently they, they go on a, I guess, three-year cycle. So this current audit is January 1st, 2018 to December 31, 2020. And it notes that there are three deficiencies. One is non-compliance with prior audit recommendations, undocumented expenditures. Finding number two is non-compliance with prior audit recommendation, failure to maintain a complete and accurate equipment roster, excuse me. Now, the previous one was submitted May of 2018. So in those three years, or whatever, I'm surprised they can't correct this. Now, the third one, which is a little serious, is unauthorized expenditures. And the gentleman I spoke to who explained the report to me, et cetera, told me that it's a simple correction they have to do, and we won't find out until August if they've corrected it. And if they have not corrected it, they will lose their state funding. So I'd like to know, since the board here received copies of this, has the board been notified by the relief fund of the corrective actions for this audit, since we have a contract? And if not, what action was taken by the board to ensure the Relief Fund Association of York Springs Fire Company would take corrective action to address the findings? Because I was told by Mr. Hoover at the audit office in Harrisburg, that usually townships will work with the fire companies to make sure that they are in compliance of the audits. And I know that all these, and this has nothing to do with the volunteer. This is, the board is responsible for this. So do you know what's happening with this, with this new audit that they're going to have to produce, I think, I was told in August?
Did you state the audit report was dated the 20...
I can't hear you.
Did you state that the audit was given back to you on 2021?
No, these are, these are online. You can check...
But the audit, the audit that's in question was...
2020, 2020.
Okay. Which certainly, I wouldn't have had that because I was not a member of the board. So I don't, I don't, I can't answer your question. I have no knowledge of what you're discussing. I would defer you to the fire company to ask those questions.
Attend their meeting and question them about it.
But...
Well, but you're, you're, you're our representatives. And this, like I said, the usual, I was told by the audit office, Mike Hoover, that townships work with their volunteer fire departments to make sure that they are in compliance. I mean, they're, they're possibly, if they haven't corrected that last item, they will lose their funding, I was told by Mike Hoover. The auditor general doesn't play with that kind of stuff where it's an expenditure. So I'll take it to the fire company, but, you know, we give money. And what happens is, Mike told me that townships do not give any money to them until they know that these audits have been corrected. So as representatives for the taxpayers' money, I find it really interesting that you keep your hands off it, except to sign a contract.
I, you know, I don't think we kept our hands off. I don't think I was a supervisor in 2021. But now that you have informed us, I would be glad to go to the fire company and discuss it with them.
Yeah, because it's, it's unfortunate because who'll suffer are the volunteer fire people.
Well, you referenced the volunteers. The boards are volunteers too. The board is not, the board, the boards of the fire companies are not...
But the board, the board is responsible for the governing of it.
I understand that, but...
And the volunteers have nothing to do with this audit.
What I'm saying is the, the board are also volunteers. They're not...
They're made up of volunteers.
Volunteers. But the issue is, if there's issues, we will get with them and see what the status is. I will take care of that. Okay. Narima report?
There was no meeting from Narima since the last time we discussed the going in with the truck.
Okay.
Their next meeting is September, I think.
Yes. Yes.
I have a question. On their, on the municipality agreement, it indicates there's supposed to be an annual meeting in August, so that's not taking place?
Annual meeting of what?
Of Narima. It's supposed to take place in August.
I do not know. I am not, I'm not a board, I'm on the board representing Huntington Township, but not in an administrative deal of the action of Narima. I can't, can't discuss that or give you information at that.
Okay. Old business review and approve Greenberry Road. Scott reported the status of that. Myers Town, you discussed that as, as well. The next is discuss the two mature CDs and determine reinvestment details. I think the options we have at this point in time are Adams County National or Pliggett. And I saw you gave me, you gave us new rates here, Pat. From, do you know how many basis, are these net basis points, or did he tell you? Are there basis all for these, these...
He didn't answer.
All for these rates? Okay.
This is the wealth management side?
Correct. Which would, they charge basis points. You have, so basically the CD rates are 12 months are 5.3%, 18, 5.2, 20, 24 months was 5%. I don't think we want to tie the money up for two years. The Pliggett rates that I, were given, they charge, they charge 15 basis points upfront. Okay. And then the, the rates that they quoted me yesterday were six months, 5.55%. 12 months, well, 240 days are 5, they're all 5.55% basically. So, I mean, we can stay locally, I don't care. We can invest with Pliggett. The rates are comparable. I think the issue, we, the basis points are, come off monthly from Adams County National, is that correct? So, I mean, net, you're going to be very close. So, I mean, I don't care. I mean, we can, anybody have a preference?
Pat wasn't happy with the way they administered the layoff CD from the trust.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we go with, try with Pliggett.
Okay. Okay, and that would be six months? Is that good, Pat? You want, I, I, to me, 5.5%, you know, which would be net 5.4% with the 15 basis points, I think, is an attractive offer. So I'll make a motion, we invest the CDs we have with Pliggett for 180 days. Okay?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Okay, I do want to ask a question.
Sure.
The, the first $150,000 we got out, that we were taking to members first, we had up that to 160.
Okay.
Okay. And that's sitting in a checking account.
Right.
We need to get that out.
Right.
But then the second one now, we're just looking at 150. So we want to do 310, or do you want to do like two smaller?
I think we need to talk to Pliggett about that to make sure we're not exceeding the FDIC. You know, we want to make sure it's insured, so we don't want to go higher than...
Yeah.
So I think we can break it into two different CDs to protect that. I think, but I'm not sure that, I think it's $250,000 is what the guarantee is. I don't want to...
Right.
If you understand.
So there we go, 310.
Right. Okay, and we could split it up a couple different ways.
And longer term than the six months was the same rate?
Yeah, it's, it actually drops after, a year is actually 5.4%. It drops.
And there was nothing between six and...
No. It's all, it's 5.5, oh, you can go 210 days, you can go 240, 270, but it actually drops after 210 days.
Pat, well, how much of a pain is it to, like, if you have a CD and it's matured, to roll it over? That's a question, I mean...
We never hit a problem with Adams County. It was, they sent the notice and, and then Members First didn't renew automatically, and when we went to renew it, then, then it was the public funds thing. And as to Adams County Wealth Management, the four-page statements were kind of odd.
Yeah.
But...
These rates, these rates from Adams County are the wealth management group. They're not...
Yes.
Right.
And as to Pliggett, you know, I've, I've never dealt with them, so I can't say.
Okay, all right. I was just curious.
Well, I understand we do that Pliggett electronically, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Save a trip to Dillsburg.
Right. Okay.
What about something like 240, and then just wait and see what we want to do with the rest later on?
I think that's, that's fine. So you're, you're, why don't you make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we put 240,000 in a Pliggett six-month term, whatever they call their...
CD, yes, it's a CD. Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Now, what about the other 70?
We will talk about that next month. No. Okay, we have to adopt a resolution to join Pliggett. You prepared that, correct, Todd? Okay, any questions or comments about that? It's...
Could you please share what that, what PLGID is?
Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution to be a member of Pliggett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item is ratify the employee, employee promotion. Okay?
Yes, I will make a motion that we move Chad Asper's employment from part-time to assistant roadmaster.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Excuse me, when does that take effect?
Next pay cycle?
It's retro until April.
Oh, okay.
Okay, review current wages. Chad has been here part-time. He's doing an excellent job. He's very talented. He's had opportunities to go elsewhere and he's chosen to stay with us. And I think it's something we need to look at his wage rate to, to keep somebody here. Comparing the markets and the, the job market out there, I think we need to do what we do to try to keep him as an employer. The feedback we've been getting has been very good. He's currently at $24.77 wage rate.
Yes.
Correct. Any discussion or suggestions, gentlemen?
Do we ever have that set? For the realization week?
Yes, we do, but we were about to change it because I'm going to make a motion, we move it to 26.
Yeah.
Nice to see you taking initiative now after certain people are going. We appreciate it.
Okay, it's been moved to change his wage rate to 26. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Well, I have a comment on the wages. PSATS is now doing a salary survey and getting ready for the, the new budget. And, you know, I think that maybe we should look at some of the other positions that we have too.
I agree completely, Pat.
Excuse me, and when does the raise take effect? As of today?
Beginning of the pay period that we are in today.
Okay, discuss and approve details of new truck purchase. As Chuck said, we, we approved that purchase at the last month's meeting. What we need to discuss is where those funds are coming from.
Okay. And you, and here is an email from Holly.
Okay.
Right there. Is that it?
Yeah.
The first paragraph.
Okay. The email Pat is discussing or mentioning is about the use of the ARP funds. And we, as you know, as has been reported multiple times, you can use the ARP funds for, for equipment. So...
You have to make a motion to do so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. I will make a motion, we use our ARP funds to, as a, to purchase the truck. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Is the whole purchase price coming from that fund?
We don't have enough to pay the whole. We have $216,000 and some odd dollars in there, so it'll be 255 approximately.
Okay, so the extra money will come from another...
Equipment fund, I guess.
Yeah.
I also have a question. Are we getting rid of any vehicles, any trucks, or just retaining another one?
Yes, we're going to get rid of the old Mack. We're going to get rid of that.
So how many CDL vehicle, how many CDL cloud trucks will we have?
Four.
How many CDL operators do we have?
We have three.
Okay, guys have a copy of that, I assume? Any questions?
Yeah, this is like two-part. You got the emergency plan, which, you know, covers everything, and then that promulgation is for two... Yeah, this is like two-part, you got the emergency plan, which, you know, covers everything, and then that promulgation is for two years.
Right.
And the county does recognize, Kim Frank from the county, you know, she said if, if everything done through NARIMA, the county does recognize that, and so will the state.
Okay. Any questions, guys? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the plan as municipal resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item is Waste Management Update. At the main meeting, I made a statement that the best part, the important part about Waste Management appears that the issues have been resolved. To that end, I called Waste Management and discussed with the Michael Fagan, the manager, if you have any complaints, and he said, no, they have had no more issues. And then he informed me that the, the citizens actually were given a credit back in March of, March 5th of 2024. So, that issue has been resolved, the people have been issued credits, based on information that we had sent them, that Mr. King had sent them, so.
Why wouldn't the attorney have been notified about that?
Uh, that's a question for Waste Management, that, I don't know why they didn't notify us, I wish they would have, but they didn't. So. The ex, the next part about Waste Management, I, I asked the gentleman who people should contact if they have an issue, and he gave me a number. So, you know, if people have issues, they should contact Waste Management about their pickups and resolution. If they're not being satisfied, obviously, they can contact us, and we will follow up if necessary. But they should contact directly, because they have that information, so I have the number. The number is 717-597-6919, and that's the operations center. And they, that person, I asked if they should ask for anybody specifically, they said, no, this, this, this number should handle their issues. Okay?
Well, that's a local number in Greencastle.
Right. Then we, then obviously, okay, any questions about that?
One quick question about, is the township going to check with any of the residents to make sure that's true?
I, go ahead, Gus, I think you.
I, I guess I, I can do that.
You know, I, I would assume that if somebody didn't get the credit, they would have contacted us by now, if they still continue to have issues, you know.
Well, the funny part was, I had several people call me and say, hey, I got a credit.
Okay.
And asking me what it was for.
Right.
I tried to find out, and I couldn't find out.
You know, again, I think Waste Management has not done a good job communicating with these people. You know, and I, I gave that feedback to our person, the person I spoke to, and I will, I will relay those messages back to them again, that they should, instead of just sending a credit, they should notify, because, you know, some people might not have even seen it on their statement. So. Okay. Okay, that is all the old business. Okay, new business, discuss appointment of alternate SEO, Suge Enforcement Officer due to Terry Sheldon's retirement. Okay. Okay, so he retired?
Well, he's not, he's certified until the end of August or September, and he will, you know, continue in his capacity till that time. And he recommended that GHI in Hanover, that they have some people that are, are going to classes to be certified, and, you know, possibly, we could get a replacement there.
So we need to continue to look for somebody to replace Terry Sheldon, okay?
Right.
Okay, so, we, we will do that. Okay. The next item, acknowledge tax collector letter concerning bulk escrow accounts. Apparently, in the county, it, there's an organization that does the escrow, for, if you have a property tax, it's an escrow account, there's a company that takes care of that, then they issue the payments. They were not paying promptly to the tax collectors creating an issue, do I say that correctly, Roxy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
CoreLogic is the one that collects most of the, from the.
Mortgage.
Mortgage company.
Right.
And they wanted us to send letters saying they need to get it earlier so they can get it to us, because we were getting our payments the day before discount was over.
Okay.
So it's just to give us more time that we can enter before discount's over.
Okay, so, I, I wrote a letter to those, the company, asking, giving them dates that we need the money, at the suggestion of the county, so that's been taken care of.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Discuss and approve appointment of James Zerfing to the position of building code officer.
Yes, James Zerfing is our inspector, and when we made the switch between the agencies, we appointed Mike Hartman. Who is the managing director of MDI, the inspection agency, to be the building code official, which is a position I used to have. And he accepted that, and we, we did the fake work. Well, now, since we've signed on with him, it's added an extra amount of work for Mike, and so he's recommending that we appoint Jim Zerfing as VCO. He's the one that's familiar with our permits that are out there, and he does the final inspection, so it would be appropriate for him to take that part of the job.
Guys, any questions or comments about that?
I make a motion, we approve, appoint Jim Zerfing as building code officer.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I missed number three, approve a resolution adopting a recording devices policy. I, I asked Mr. King to, to look at us having a, a resolution, so, to clarify where people can record this meeting from. And he has drafted a resolution, as we're allowed to by law, for the safety and the conduct of the meetings, so, do you want to go through that, Todd, or?
Alright, so, under the Sunshine Act, an agency is allowed to set forth rules and regulations regarding the, the regulation of meetings and how they work. So, in the direction of Supervisor Boyer, I, I looked at some other resolutions of other municipalities that we represent, other townships across the state, and also some boroughs. One of them, that sticks out in my mind was Steelton Borough, and a lot of them have language that is consistently used over and over again. And, basically, I went through it, and I went back and forth with Supervisor Boyer a few times to make sure that we thought that everything that was in there would be reasonable. Do you want me to go through it item by item? I think you should read it all.
Okay, we.
Because since we don't get copies of any of these things prior.
Alright, so, the, the restrictions on recording devices, the, the rules essentially are that recording devices, including tape recorders, video cameras, television cameras, microphones, cameras, cellular telephones, and other mechanical or electric, or electronic devices that record audio, video, or both. So that's just basically outlining what is considered a recording device. So the recording device shall be positioned only in the location designated by the chair of the meeting, and these rules apply to the supervisors, the planning commission, the zoning hearing board, and the Board of Auditors. Which designation shall provide reasonable access to record the proceedings without distracting or blocking the view of audience members, and without being affixed to or occupying spaces on furniture, walls, or fixtures in the meeting room. The information table, which is that located between the two entrances, would be the default location for positioning recording devices that are not handheld. Positioning recording devices in other locations shall be requested by the operator prior to the meeting commencing. In no event shall the use of recording devices deprive any other member of the public from utilizing a chair provided for use by the public attending a public meeting. No microphones or audio recording devices shall be permitted to place on the table utilized by the board or commission subject to this article, so on this table. Supplemental lighting for video recording devices shall not be permitted, the lighting in the room is sufficient to provide adequate light to videotape the meetings. No recording devices which produce sound distracting to the audience or to the meeting participants shall be permitted. No recording devices may be operated while concealed. No recording devices shall be permitted to record prior to the commencement of a public meeting, following the adjournment of a public meeting, during a recess of a public meeting, during a conference held pursuant to section of, section 707B of the Sunshine Act, which is with regard to certain meetings that, it's not an executive session, because that's the next part, I forget exactly, I even looked it up.
Excuse me, could, could you repeat that entire paragraph?
No recording devices shall be permitted to record prior to the commencement of a public meeting, following the adjournment of a public meeting, during a recess of a public meeting, during a conference held pursuant to section 707B of the Sunshine Act, or during an executive session of the Board of Supervisors held pursuant to section 708 of the Sunshine Act. No recording device may be used to record private conversations between audience members, officials, or others whose comments or questions are made privately and not for public consumption. Movement about the room while a meeting is in progress may be distracting and bothersome to the audience and to meeting participants. Persons operating recording devices shall remain in a single location during the meeting and shall not be permitted to move about in order to record while the meeting is in progress. Operators of recording devices who violate these rules and regulations and who do not immediately remedy the violation at the request of the Board of Supervisors shall not be permitted to continue recording during the meeting.
Now, are there any rules for people that do a public service for the community, such as Huntington Township Lodge? This is a public service so that people can benefit to know what their government is doing, and I think one of those things about, I, I don't quite understand either, is the one about who records someone's private conversations in public?
Well, if I can, I'll reply to that. Yeah. We're, you can still videotape, we're just telling you where you can videotape from. We, we're not saying in any way you cannot videotape. Okay? To your question about the private conversations. If you're videotaping prior to a meeting, and somebody's talking to their neighbor, that is not part of the public meeting, that is outside the purview of the public.
But it's in public.
But.
Once we come in here, I, I think your solicitor should check civil rights, federal civil rights.
I also think you probably need permission from the person that you are taping.
Excuse me?
I think you probably need permission from the person who you are recording.
Well, who would, first of all, when you come in here, it's a public building, it is public.
That's right.
And we, as residents, and any of us in here, when you're in public, any kind of public, whether it's before or after a meeting, you're in public, and if your conversation has to be kept private, then you leave and you make your own prophecy. And that's why I would request that solicitor can check on that. And I, I want to explain, when you commented to the gentleman who does the editing and uploading, et cetera, I didn't care that we had to move the camera, it was your tone of voice, it was like he was a piece of dirt, and I don't appreciate that. He does, he does all the editing and uploading, et cetera, and to be treated that way when he's, it, it was just very rude of you, I think.
Okay.
That is my opinion.
I have a question, why, if it's a public meeting, and everything's recorded the way it is, would it need to be edited?
Editing is not taking things out, editing is, we have two cameras, we have an audio recorder, he's got to down all, download all that, and they create where he can get Gus and the gentleman, and the engineer, the roadmaster, et cetera. That's what editing is, it is not editing things out, people that aren't.
Well, you do take stuff out.
I want to ask you, why don't you have the pledge allegiance in that? Of all the things to be concerned about, that's what you got? Yeah, I do.
Okay, let me.
I'm glad you watch, thank you.
Let, let me interrupt.
I don't want to let you down, I do want to let you know that.
If Mark and I are talking something personal to us, I don't want you recording us, that's none of your business.
I'm not talking about recording anybody.
Well, but, excuse me, you know, if, if the microphone picks up that, a private conversation, it's picking up a private conversation. No, if it's, but if the recording's going on before the meeting or after. If it's, if it's, but at the end, at the end of the day, last month, there was, there was an issue, and now we're addressing that issue, so it's very clear on what their rules and expectations are. So that's what, that's the intent of this resolution.
Okay, I have a question or observation, the board is recording the meeting as well, right?
We're, we're reporting, the audio, we're not videoing.
Okay, but we're talking words here, we're talking about words, conversation between people. Does that want to apply to that recording as well, these rules will apply to that recording as well, or is this just a public?
This is, she's, she's recording the audio just during the meeting for the taking and the clarification of the minutes, that's what she's doing. She's not.
The whole recording applies to?
Anybody in this room, anybody in this room with this policy can still video.
Right.
The, the, the meeting, as long as they're following these rules. Right.
Well, the problem is, though, with the civil rights question I have, about, once you walk in here, it's public. This is a public building, it is in public, it's not like coming into.
So, so if you want to be here and record the pledge allegiance and put it on YouTube, you're welcome, nobody's talking.
If it's during a public meet.
She says she doesn't edit, why does she edit that kind of stuff out? But the. That's, that's part of.
Okay, but guys, let's get back on track, we, we have, we read, we read the policy.
And this is what happens when you start to put rules in effect, because then people, okay, what is your rule on Laura Hope, you sat next to me at that auditor's meeting? I'd like to know why she, as an auditor, an elected official, stuck her phone up and admitted she was only recording me, for retaliation, that's what it was for, that's offensive to me. So what are the rules about you people videotaping us as retaliation? And that's what I find it, because, because I started instituting these meetings online.
Pardon me, we're, we're, wait, I can't speak for Laura Hope, so I'm not going to reply for her.
Right.
Now that we have a policy, it's very clear what the rules and expectations are, okay? So.
It just goes out for everyone in the room.
Everybody in the room. But, you know, if, quite frankly, I don't know why we couldn't have a camera here looking at the audience if we choose to, I don't, I don't suspect that's going to be the case, but.
Well.
They're security cameras, so.
No, this is what I think that, yeah.
Okay.
You, you said there was an instance, what, last meeting or something, that brought this up, I wasn't present.
Right.
What was the incident that caused us to have to get?
I asked, I asked the gentleman to move his, he was placing it right there, and I asked him to move it. Okay, so, I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution on our policy adopting recording devices. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yep, any question?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So that will be in effect at next meeting. Okay. Subdivisions and land development, JBI review, anything new there?
JBI, the only thing I got, the, their contractor came in and presented me with a, an application for a building permit to build a 22,000 square foot truck garage. I told him that I would accept the permit application, and we'll process it, but they can't start building until we get a land development plan.
Sure.
So, that's, that, and they have the laws to do the land development plan.
Right.
Now, they tell me that they're working on it very hard. Now, they tell me that they're working on it very hard, so.
And, and that was their response to?
Well, it's been their response, yeah.
Okay.
Where is the track place supposed to be?
Behind the McLees Furniture Store.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So what is happening with the ground that they're placing there now?
That, that ground is good filled, clean filled, and I guess that's where it's going to be a foundation for the new building.
And that has nothing to do with what we?
That's in accordance with the permit that they received from DEP.
Okay.
Soil conservation.
Right.
All right, thank you for.
Yeah, clearing that up, because I was just wondering.
Yeah, that's.
If it was okay with DEPN soil conservation, okay.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Lowball, Gus mentioned that, the plan's in front of us.
Well, the plans are there, they've, they've been approved and recommended by the planning commission. The plan needs signed, they, actually, you need a motion by you guys to accept the recommendation to approve those plans.
You guys have both seen this?
Yeah.
I still have one outstanding comment from my letter dated May 6th.
Okay.
Comment number two, the plan should be signed and sealed by license surveyor. Via the final approval, I looked at the plans tonight, and pledge sheets two and three are still not signed and sealed properly.
Okay.
So I recommend that be a condition of the approval.
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or any other comments?
Page one sealed?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the subdivision plan for Lowball and BUP contingent upon Engineer Scott's Long Streets comment number two, that the sheet speaks, is properly signed and notarized.
Well, they are signed and notarized, they need to be sealed by the surveyor.
Sealed by the survey.
Okay.
Understood?
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have to approve the non-building waiver, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
That we waive the?
The, the non-building waiver.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, another subdivisions, correct?
Nope.
Okay, write to no request, June 12th, 24, Marie de Gange, Salzman Hughes, correspondence with Waste Management regarding missed trash pickups. June 14th, 2024, Marie de Gange, Salzman Hughes, May 2024 invoice. June 14th, 2024, Marie de Gange, Share Design Group, May 2024 invoices. June 20th, 24, Michael Roast Insurance Information. Upcoming meetings, the planning commission is meeting here on Monday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM. Rezoning hearing, August 1st at 7:00 PM here. Our next meeting is August 8th at 7:00. NARIMA meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM Wednesday, the 4th of September, at Butler Township. Okay, public comment, any public comment?
No, I just have a quick, in reference to the ordinance about recording, I do want to let you know that for the past year, we've been producing these videos for the residents. And just recently, within the past week and a half, we have been recognized by a very large channel that featured a video in a community post, and also a very large channel of 112,000 viewers. The views on that, on that particular video was 15,000. So, we are recognized as a, as a good channel, and one that produces quality, as well as informing the public of what is taking place at these meetings, so.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I have a question. Mr. Guy, since you spoke so passionately about it, I missed it. What was the rate increase for the assistant roadmaster?
It was raised from 24.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven to 26.
Okay, and was that 24, 77, or 76, that was what was better than one at the reorganization meeting?
That's correct.
So that meant, that meant.
Was that before the cost of living increase?
No, that was after the cost of living increase, that is what his salary was prior to this.
Yeah.
Okay, so you raised the assistant roadmaster, what you raised today plus the cost of living, just since you.
No.
No.
The cost of living was, the, the rate was 24, 77 at the reorganization meeting in January.
And he was not assistant roadmaster at that time, so he did not get that.
That was the, in January, you agreed that assistant roadmaster position would be 24.
Seventy-seven.
He knew getting hired, that he would get promoted to assistant roadmaster, and that was 24, so now we're.
No, he was not employed in January, period.
But, but that was posted, the rate was set, so now we're going a bucket beyond.
Yeah.
Correct.
And it wasn't just the assistant roadmaster, it was across the board, they did a percent across the board.
Right, but right now, it's.
We just gave the $2.
We gave him, it's a dollar twenty.
Dollar thirty.
It's a dollar.
Dollar twenty-three.
Dollar twenty-three.
A dollar twenty-three for one person, for one position.
Correct.
Nobody else has received this.
That, that's correct.
And our wages, as a public information, would I be able to write to no past wages?
Sure. Sure.
What is the reason for the increase?
Well, as I stated before, he's, he's doing an excellent job, he has a lot of experience, and looking at the, the vacancy of CDL drivers, I think we need to remain competitive, and I think that's our goal.
I, I also feel if you maybe would have done that for some other employees, you had, you would have not have to be doing that now.
You know, I, I encourage anybody who's interested in working for a township to apply, I mean.
I have and was told that.
Okay, okay.
And who are the, exactly who are, what are the names of the three employees with CDL licenses?
Myself, Chad Asper, Brian Duss.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other public comment? Harry, now I'll make a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.